All right. Good evening, Commissioners and everyone. Welcome, and over to you Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Would you please do us the honor of greeting everyone to the Tuesday, April 25th meeting?
Absolutely. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts is now meeting this regular session, April 25th, 2023. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Fai?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Commissioner Treese is excused. She is away on Clean Water Services building, uh, building business, but we also thank her for also attending some meetings on behalf of Washington County virtually, even though she is on the East Coast and in a different time zone. So, thank you to her. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak to us this evening?
We had no one sign up in advance. I did not see any signups. Would any member in our audience would to provide public comment for up to two minutes on any counter-related topic? Give you just a moment to either raise hand or stand up. Not seeing one. Would anyone viewing this meeting via Zoom like to provide a public comment for up to two minutes? Give you just a minute to utilize the raise hand function? Not seen any hands. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And I neglected to state previously that we have one additional item to tonight's agenda. It is under the Boards and Commissions section of the agenda. It will be item three, and it is to make another appointment to the Washington County and Service District for Lighting Budget Committee. Next is the adoption of our consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of two items under Clean Water Services, one item under Health and Human Services, one for Office of Community Development, and five for Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please go over raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we have proclamations. And this evening, we have a proclamation to proclaim May of 2023 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I'd like to turn it over to our Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer, Ms. Latricia Tillman, to introduce this topic and our participants this evening.
Thank you, and good evening Chair Harrington and Board. For the record, my name is Latricia Tillman. I'm your Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer. And I'm pleased to offer a few introductory remarks on our cultural heritage celebrations before I turn it over to Dale Yee with the Department of Human Services and a member of the 2023 Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Planning Committee. In turn, Dale will be introducing Ethel Galliaras, Deputy Chief Financial Officer, to read the proclamation for Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month 2023. So, Washington County Cultural Heritage Celebrations and their associated resource pages, which are on our horizons pages, are an important starting point for our collective organizational engagement and learning about equity, diversity, and inclusion. The Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrations we will enjoy this month have been planned and organized by more than 10 staff who volunteer to support our learning in addition to their official work and in partnership with Clean Water Services. So, we thank them all for their extra service. These cultural celebrations offer an opportunity to enter into a relationship with staff and community who identify as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander, to build trust and deepen our understanding of these diverse and growing communities in Washington County. These celebrations create an opportunity to learn about historic and present oppression of the AANHPI community and the community's resilience in the face of that oppression, so that we can reflect on whether our current policies and sentiments support the well-being of this community and dismantle racism and white supremacy. Despite these challenges, which are very real in the lived experience of these community members, these celebrations also present an opportunity to work together and move forward in renewing our focus and determination to prevent such oppression from continuing. No culture is monolithic. All cultures, ethnicities, and nationalities encompass a range of diverse life experiences and opinions, and there are over 45 countries and far more ethnicities and languages included within the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities. Consequently, the celebrations and resource pages are likely not going to present a fully comprehensive picture of the nuances or full ranges of opinions within any culture or subculture. It's also important to acknowledge that all of these countries' histories and cultures being lumped into one month of celebration is grossly insufficient. But whenever and wherever possible, we strive to provide opportunities for sharing and learning of the vast differences in the AANHPI community and the unique cultural identities of every person. So, just want to acknowledge the staff who participate in planning the Heritage Month celebrations are very thoughtful about the learning opportunities they share with our Washington County community, and we encourage people who may be curious about what is or is not presented, or the policy implications of what is shared, to feel free to reach out to us at the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement, or open a dialogue with any of our colleagues within the Planning Committee. So, I just want to take a brief moment to thank all the members of our committee who met over the past several weeks: Dale Yee, Kitty Kong, Sam Sam Abdi, Lorena Cousins, Brian Alberg, Veronica Garcia, Maggie Jones, Karen Chichetu, Ricardo Palazuelos, Julie McLeod, and Jessica Buchirelli. You did not tell me how to pronounce that last name, so Jessica, I apologize if I mispronounced it. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dale Yee, who will say a few words before introducing Ethel Galliaras, who will be reading the proclamation this evening.
Thank you, Latricia. Good evening, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Dale Yee. On behalf of the 2023 Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Planning Committee, I wanted to personally thank the Washington County Board of Commissioners and everyone present this evening for the opportunity to speak to you. As a proud member of the AANHPI community, it gives me great pleasure to be seen, acknowledged, and recognized for our place in the community. Know that despite the significant progress made in raising awareness on the issues affecting the AANHPI community, there remains much work to be done. That being said, I look forward to continuing our collective efforts in this area and engaging further with all of you throughout the month of our celebration. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Ethel Galliaras. Ethel is the Deputy Chief Financial Officer for the Washington County Finance Department. She oversees the finance operations and financial reporting groups. She has been an accountant for over 20 years with experience in both private industry and in government. Ethel came from the state of Oregon before joining Washington County in June of 2021. She values strong work ethics and work excellence, and applies herself in her passion in financial reporting, strategic finance, business process efficiencies, and project management. Ethel is excited to be a member of the finance leadership in Washington County as it moves towards modernization with the Design the Future Initiative of One Washington County. So, with that, Ethel?
Thank you, Dale. Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. A proclamation in honor of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month 2023. Whereas the Washington County Board of Commissioners take pride in recognizing May 2023 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander, or AANHPI, Heritage Month, honoring the many significant contributions of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Island people who have enriched the history of our nation and the Washington County, and who are instrumental in its ongoing and future successes. And whereas the official designation of May as AANHPI Heritage Month was signed into law in 1992 and celebrates all Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders known as the AANHPI community, whose variety of contributions have built our culture and society. And whereas we celebrate all of those who are included within the AANHPI community, which is made up of culturally and linguistically diverse peoples and representing populations from many countries and islands. And whereas the theme of, the theme of for this year's observance is advancing leaders through opportunity, which reflects Washington County's strong commitment to providing meaningful opportunities for innovation, critical thinking, and strategic leadership that support our mission of service to all our residents. And whereas we recognize and remain committed to the belief that opportunity is a set of circumstances that make it possible to do something, and that opportunity can be built, it can be accessed, it can be achieved, or it can be given. And whereas we believe that the foundation of our great society, and thus our great nation, is known as the land of opportunity, which in turns attracts many thousands of immigrants from all over the world to come to the United States to gain access to these opportunities, establishing roots, integrating, and bridging cultures to become a collective America. And whereas we acknowledge, appreciate, and continue to see contributions and leadership of the many Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders who have played significant role in our local history and the community fabric of Washington County in the fields of science, education, agriculture, government, commerce, the arts, and many others. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this 25th day of April 2023, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2023 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, encouraging all residents of Washington County to share in the special tribute by learning and celebrating the generations of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islanders who contribute to enrich our nation and our local community.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the three of you and to the other staff members who are participating in our cultural, ethnic Heritage Month Planning Committee, but also to all of our employees who add to the fabric of our community as well as our accomplishments together. Commissioners, do you have any comments or thoughts you'd like to share?
Yes, Chair Harrington, I just wanted to dito everything that you said. Thank you. Thank you. And this is also one of my favorite things to do, proclamations and specifically culturally specific. And so, thank you, and we see you.
I just love to hear accountants talk. It's always thrilling. Since there's a couple more of us up here, so.
There's more heart there than the numbers may say.
There you go.
Well, thank you, colleagues, and I really appreciated Dale, you're putting the point on being seen, acknowledged, and valued in our community. And with that, Commissioners, do we have a motion to adopt the proclamation as read?
Motion, Madam Chair.
My second.
All those in favor of adopting this proclamation, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Thank you very much for bringing all of this to life for us tonight. And next, we're going to move on to presentations, and thank you, Ms. Tillman, as well as to your, some of your key staff members, Ashley Horn and Amanda Garcia Snell, bringing tonight the OEICE Quarterly Report from January through March calendar Q1 of 2023. Welcome.
Thank you so much. And again, good evening, Chair Harrington and Board. For the record, again, my name is Latricia Tillman, Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer, and I'm pleased to be here again for a quarterly update with Amanda Garcia Snell, our Community Engagement Manager, and Ashley Horn, our Equity Policy Manager, to present to you our first quarter update for 2023 for the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. So, this marks three years since the passage of the Equity Resolution by your board. This quarterly report format, we are shifting how we have been presenting in the past, and instead, we'll present a snapshot of progress toward achieving the objectives laid out in the Equity Strategic Action Plan, which your board adopted in August of 2021, per the direction of your Equity Resolution. So, fewer slides this time, but we will still be presenting. It's unavoidable. We will be presenting a significant amount of exciting work, none of which we could have accomplished without the direction of the board and the partnership from Equity Champions and community members who are working for justice across the county and in the broader community. And so, I just want to begin with a moment of appreciation for all of our partners in the work. Okay, it's probably hard to read for the folks in the audience, but this is a timeline that we have presented multiple times in each quarterly report that reflects some of the significant accomplishments we've made since your board adopted the Equity Resolution in 2020. We have made significant progress in the past three years, and it reflects a significant lift, significant effort for staff and our community partners. And so, just to note some highlights here, as we mentioned, February 2020 was the adoption of the Equity Resolution, and then the following June was the adoption of the budget that funded the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. I started in my role in September 2020, and then we started working on some of the directives of the Equity Resolution, including launching the Equity Leadership Council, its committees, the Equity Action Plan, the Advisory Council on Racial Equity, and then some other things that have evolved, such as the Budget Equity Tool and our Community Engagement Policy, and launching the multi-jurisdictional COVID Racial Equity Work Group. Just some highlights. We'll talk a little bit more. So, we were asked to provide you with an organizational chart, which demonstrates how we are organizing our work around civil rights, equity, diversity, and inclusion, as well as community engagement. Our small and mighty team includes about 13.5 FTE, myself included, along with three managers who are building out systems countywide in support of three books of work, Civil Rights, Equity, and Community Engagement. One of those managers has not yet been hired, our Civil Rights Officer. That position is vacant and currently in recruitment. We have several subject matter-specific positions across these three areas, two of which are limited duration in support of building out our Civil Rights Compliance funded by ARPA, and 3.5 Admin Staff, one limited duration Project Manager also working in support of our equity-focused ARPA projects. So, just by way of background and reminder, tonight, we are structuring our quarterly update to align with the Equity Strategic Action Plan. This was a slight modification of a requirement of the Equity Resolution. We were charged, or I was charged with delivering an Equity Strategic Plan to the board, but given the timeline that was available, we led with a Strategic Action Plan, which was really focused on building out foundational work in support of the upcoming countywide strategic plan. And it was developed based on an initial understanding of readiness, supportive infrastructure, and internal and external partner capacity. And upon implementation, we encountered policy, procedural, and programmatic, and data realities, so some strengths, some gaps, all of which impacted the work compared to what we thought we'd be doing in the timeline that we initially developed. So, the more we learned, the more we adjusted. But we have made significant progress nonetheless, and we are excited to share a high-level overview of that progress with you tonight. And then, at the end of the presentation, we will share how will we, how we will be updating our Equity Strategic Action Plan with timelines, and with the intent that it will align with the upcoming countywide community strategic plan. Okay, so before we jump into the various points within the update, I just wanted to give you a little orientation to the way that we're organizing our presentation tonight. So, again, the Strategic Action Plan was based on an initial assessment of current state, and when it was adopted, much of our staff was not on board. I had not completed my first year with the county, so everything that we put in that action plan was a best guess at a point in time. So, as we go through each slide, we will provide a high-level explanation of each category or objective, and at the end of each slide, we'll pause to see if you have any questions, or if you would like us to provide more specific detail on any one item. The color key that we're using is red, which is not started. Tan is for items in progress. Green is for items that are complete and kind of finite, and purple is for items where there was a deliverable that was completed or launched and continues ongoing. So, with that, I'll start. As I mentioned at the beginning, we have hired and onboarded several team members, but that work is ongoing, just as, you know, sometimes people leave. For other opportunities, we've had some of that happen, and so, the recruitment continues. It's very cyclical. As you know, we have launched the Advisory Council on Racial Equity, which is our external body, so that is launched and ongoing. We have our Equity Leadership Council, which meets quarterly. That's our internal Equity Leadership Body. That is also launched and ongoing. And as you know, we established six committees under that Equity Leadership Council structure, and those committees are also internal. They meet every four to six weeks. They are launched and ongoing. So, we'll start with a lot of purple there. As we move on to Civil Rights Compliance, this was specifically called out in the Equity Resolution as a critical responsibility for the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. Initially, we talked about updating a Title VI Civil Rights Plan, which is a client civil rights plan, but we learned that we actually lack a client civil rights policy as a county and a procedure for compliance, which is a foundational step prior to update and implementation of a plan. So, that updated or drafted policy and procedure is currently out for all staff review, and when that is complete, we'll compile those comments, integrate what we can, and then bring that forward to your board for discussion and adoption. Our Affirmative Action Plan update is currently underway, but per our report on the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan late last year, we shared that we need to update how our job classifications align with the Department of Labor EEO job categories before we run the new affirmative action data analysis. And we want to make sure that we have a really solid logic behind how we're assigning our job classifications to those job groups, so that the data we present is accurate. In terms of the Americans with Disabilities Act policy update, again, we initially intended to update the policy, but found we also currently lack a countywide policy and procedure for assuring reasonable accommodations for clients and community members with disabilities, a countywide ADA coordinator, and a complaint system. So, we will be bringing that forward for your consideration in May. And as you may recall, your board did pass the Limited English Assistance Policy in November 2020, and that implementation work is ongoing. So, that's quite exciting. The policy is green. The implementation work, which is not reflected here, is ongoing. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley Horn now to talk about our progress toward achieving our employee and supplier diversity and inclusion objectives.
Thank you, Latricia. Good evening, Chair Harrington and members of the board. My name is Ashley Horn, and I have the pleasure of serving as OEICE's Equity Policy Manager. I am excited to share some accomplishments and highlights with you this evening. I will start at the top with the Employee and Supplier Best Practices category, as Latricia mentioned, and that first bullet up there, Employee Resource Group Policy. We are happy to report that both the Employee Resource Group Permissive Policy and its procedures will be posted for all staff review within the next couple of weeks. Both are expected to come to the board for action in June of 2023. Moving down to bilingual pay policy, we have shared many updates about this work, so I'll focus on some high-level updates. We are working with the Equity Leadership Council's Employee and Supplier Best Practices Committee and Human Resources to finalize that policy update, and we are currently working with Human Resources to develop accompanying procedures. And we'll work with the Budget Office to conduct a cost impact assessment this spring and summer. This work is very involved, and we expect to come to the board for action by October of 2023. Next, with our diversity recruitment policy work, per our Equal Employment Opportunity Plan, we are partnering with Human Resources to develop a diversity recruitment policy. This work is underway. And then procurement equity policy work. As you may recall, the board heard an equity and contracting update in May of 2021, adopted the C2P2 framework in November of 2021, and adopted revised procurement rules in January of 2022. This work is very exciting.
Well, we can just pause there, see if there's anything you'd like more detail on before we move to the next slide.
I really appreciate hearing how your work has revealed that in a couple of areas, if I captured it right, the Civil Rights Policy and Procedure and the Americans for Disability Act Policy and Procedure, that we need to establish those. So, thank you for being clear about that. Also, the, I appreciate the work that the, the outcome of adopting the MWSB policy. What I'm very interested in is seeing that as we put our money where our mouth is through, for example, our capital investments, including what we just committed to fund for our critical facilities, that we are able to put that policy into action through those contracts. And I can't say 100% that I know what I'm asking for, but I know I want to support it, and so, I appreciate your assistance in helping ensure that we are putting our money where our mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I think in a prior quarterly report, you made a request for a report on our supplier diversity outcomes, which we are beginning to develop that outline and understand how our data systems are either working with us or working against us, and being able to deliver that report to you in a way that's accurate. And I think the work that's happening around the ERP replacement, hopefully, will make that an easier process going forward, but we'll be struggling through to get you that report in August.
Okay. In this slide, I will share some status update information on the data equity, equity policy, and equity diversity and inclusion training categories of our Strategic Action Plan, starting at the top with Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. This data reporting is ongoing, and we just talked about some of this work. And we are excited about how this is evolving. Our minority-owned, women-owned, and emerging small businesses and COVID reporting is coming before you pretty much in every quarterly report. And of course, Latricia just mentioned the August And of course, Latricia just mentioned the August 2023 report that we'll be bringing shortly. Next, Boards and Commissions demographic reporting. Currently, we analyze on a quarterly basis the self-reported demographic data for applicants and appointees, which includes race and ethnicity, age, and gender. We look for changes in representation and gaps across the boards and commissions. Moving forward, we will begin to look at gaps in representation for specific boards and commissions to implement a more focused recruitment strategy for those. Next, with client demographic data standards, we are working on assessing countywide data collection infrastructure needs. Latricia mentioned some of those challenges and opportunities. We have laid the groundwork for a much-needed countywide data assessment and looking at the infrastructure needs we have. And such an assessment would include informed recommendations on how we may best consistently collect demographic information across our programs and services. Moving to the equity policy category, you see a lot of purple there because this work is ongoing. Our budget equity tool, OEIC, worked in partnership with the Equity Leadership Council's Equity Policy Committee and the larger Equity Leadership Council to develop and finalize our inaugural budget equity tool in 2021, which was implemented in support of the fiscal year '22 through '23 budget process. We then evolved this tool per staff feedback and executive budget direction. As you heard in the Budget Committee orientation, in support of the fiscal year '23-'24 budget process, we developed and supported the implementation of two distinct budget equity tools, one for internally facing org units and another for externally facing org units. Budget equity work is ongoing. It will never end. Policy equity review. We are working with the Equity Leadership Council's Equity Policy Committee to review Administrative Policy 101A. Suggested edits to the procedures address policy equity review processes, and those are in process right now, and that work is also ongoing. Moving down to equity diversity and inclusion training, I'd say two big highlights there, the plan, and then also an RFPQ, and I'll speak to both of those. As we all know, learning and development is a very important part of equity diversity and inclusion work. As you may recall, OEIC indicated need for and was hopeful about a lead EDI training position. While we do not currently have dedicated staff to lead out all of the work we imagined under this position, we are working actively with Human Resources Learning and Development Lead, the Equity Leadership Council's Training Committee, and partners to develop a plan and a menu of learning and development options to support our important resources, our staff. Next one, EDI training, RFPQ. We are working with Human Resources Learning and Development Manager and the Equity Leadership Council's Training Committee to finalize an EDI learning and development RFPQ and plan to launch this this summer. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Garcia-Snell to talk about community. Oh, sorry, got excited.
I just, I can't help but chime in here, particularly with regard to the equity policy and the work that you have done with the budget equity tool. I appreciated the presentation in our budget orientation meeting, one of two, and I know that I'm going to be learning a whole lot more about how our agency, our great staff, are able to operationalize equity and what kind of things I need to do a better job of in my future policy and investment decision-making to do a better job myself. So it's a journey, it's an adventure, and I look forward to continuing to learn more and figure out how to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll turn it over to Ms. Garcia-Snell to talk about community engagement.
Thank you, Ashley. As Ashley mentioned, I'm Amanda Garcia-Snell, Community Engagement Manager, and I will share a few updates with you from under the community engagement umbrella. So beginning with the first activity, we continue to work toward intentional relationship building with culturally-specific partners, and this is a top priority for us this year. Regarding civic leadership training, we completed the Civic Leadership RFP and were able to expand the offerings with addition of some American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding. So we selected three providers to implement this fiscal year, three different cohorts, and those are Adelante Mujeres, Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon or Apano, and Unite Oregon. As you may recall, in January of 2022, your board adopted the Land Acknowledgement through Resolution Order 225, and I'll add a bit more about that topic on the next slide, the implementation of that. For Reimagine Oregon, staff continue to meet and have made some recommendations to your board in past updates. Currently, they're working on housing recommendations that will be coming to you in the future. And as you may be aware, the ARPA COVID Racial Equity Work Group continues to be convened by espousal strategies as part of the ARPA multijurisdictional community engagement work that we are engaged with in with the cities of Beaverton and Hillsborough. More recently, the CRE, as we call the COVID Racial Equity Work Group, will be transitioning to provide more input specific to capacity building and equitable community engagement across the three jurisdictions. So moving on to Boards and Commissions, we continue to work on increasing diversity and supporting inclusion among the county's advisory boards and commissions. A few of the activities we've completed include developing Washington County-specific community engagement spectrum, a review of web-based engagement tools that resulted in the county's recommendation to purchase and use Mural, which we now are doing. And then in addition to staffing the Equity Leadership Council Committee for Boards and Commissions Diversity and Inclusion Best Practices, we continue to expand and refine our diversification strategies. The committee is working on strategies for recruitment and retention, bylaws, and onboarding and training recommendations. And as Ashley mentioned, we are, continue to work on those strategies and expand that work. We will also continue to provide the annual update that we provide in the fourth quarter regarding Boards and Commissions diversity. And I'll pause for questions before I pass it to Ashley.
All right. This slide reflects a snapshot of important equity, diversity, and inclusion bodies of work that extend beyond what is reflected in our current Strategic Action Plan. These items were added because of new funding, opportunities, directives, and/or community feedback. We want to share them with you for your awareness and because they reflect significant work by our team in partnership with other departments and community members. Starting with the Legislative Equity Tool at the top, we worked in partnership with Government Relations and the Equity Leadership Council Equity Policy Committee and larger Equity Leadership Council to develop and vet the county's first-ever legislative equity tool, which was piloted this legislative session. The application of this tool is ongoing.
We are continuing to work on community participation organization and committee for community involvement re-envisioning. And I will, per our engagement mandate, and I will be coming back to you on May 9th with a specific update for that program area. Last fall, we began to convene staff to work on an implementation plan and procedures for using the Land Acknowledgement Statement that you all approved, and this work also includes consideration of the recommendations that we received from indigenous community partners that were shared with you in 2021. Last fall, your board adopted the Equitable Community Engagement Policy, and we continue to work with staff on developing the procedure for implementing that policy. And as you recently heard in Supportive Housing Services update, community engagement staff continue to work on expanding the culturally-specific and responsive community partnership network in Supportive Housing Services and support equitable community engagement in new and emerging shelters and housing. And I'll pause for questions before I pass it back to Latricia.
Okay. So if that all sounded like a lot of information, it was even more work, and the next slide kind of helps to encapsulate it in a nice, tidy chart. This summary reflects progress on 40 objectives, 32 of which were included in the Strategic Action Plan, and eight of which were not in the plan, but as was mentioned, we wanted to highlight because of the significance of the work and its contribution to our equity foundation for Washington County. So this is not a full reflection of all the work that OEIC has led or supported over the past 2.5 years. But in summary, while a few of the objectives have had a delayed start, we have completed or are in maintenance for almost two-thirds of the objectives that we identified in August of 2021, and slightly more than a third are in the status of in progress. So this is a really solid position for us to be in for a plan that extends through the end of 2023. So then you ask, well, where do we go from here? So we're going to share this over the next couple of slides. As we mentioned earlier, we did not develop an equity strategic plan intentionally so that we could align with the countywide strategic planning process and not have two parallel plans. I think all of us thought that we would be in the strategic planning process by now, but since we are still in the pre-planning phase, we need to think about how to continue to advance an equity strategic action plan in the meantime in service to the forthcoming countywide strategic planning process. So through the completion of this action plan timeframe, or now through December 2023, we will continue to work on the objectives in the current plan with a focus on moving the items that are not started and in progress toward completion and maintenance phase. And in the late summer through the end of the year, we will begin assessing where we are as an organization, reflecting the significant change in the structures of our organization and the culture of our organization as well. So this assessment will include an organizational climate assessment, which we've, there have been several conversations in different parts of the county about conducting an organizational climate assessment, so really thinking about how to move that forward, advancing a community perception survey to gather feedback from the community about how we're doing relative to our commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion and civil rights. By the late summer and fall, we should have our updated Equal Employment Opportunity and Affirmative Action data. And then we'd also like to start looking at how we can benchmark our progress compared to some other tools. So there are tools that include the Global Diversity and Inclusion Benchmark. It's a set of measures that many in the practice of diversity and inclusion are using to determine where organizations are in terms of just starting, in compliance mode, or moving to more transformational work. And there are also benchmark assessments focused on disability or the Disability Equality Index for veterans, the Veterans Equality Index, and for the LGBTQIA+ community, there is a tool called the Corporate Equality Index. So those benchmarks, while typically they apply to more corporate entities, they still provide us with important information and kind of guideposts for where we can be moving our equity, diversity, and inclusion practice forward. And it just gives us an opportunity to compare ourselves to other organizations who take this work very seriously. So with that data, it will not only help inform the Strategic Action Plan next steps, but it will also help to inform the countywide strategic plan. So that data collection analysis phase would help, would move us through the end of 2023. And then beginning in 2024, we would work with equity leaders internally and externally to co-create a new interim equity strategic action plan for the next two fiscal years. And we would want to develop it in a way that it could be updated and renewed if needed until the countywide strategic plan is adopted. So the early few months of 2024 would be that co-creation and development phase, working with the bodies that we've already established, our Equity Leadership Council Committees, the Equity Leadership Council, the Advisory Council on Racial Equity, and the broader community. And then that co-created plan would be brought forward to the board in the spring of 2024 for your discussion, input, modification, et cetera, until we get to the point of adoption, with the intent that implementation would begin in fiscal year 2024, 2025. And so that concludes our quarterly update, and I want to close with appreciation for the leadership of Ms. Garcia-Snell and Ms. Horn, who have just been great leaders and supporters of our team as well as our partners throughout the county and throughout the community of Washington County. And with that, I'll hand it back over to you, Chair Harrington, for any comments, questions, or feedback you might have for us.
Let me start with thank you. There's tremendous foundation building that has gone on over these last, not quite, three years of time. Well, three years in terms of adoption of the resolution, but having the resources to actually do the implementation lagged with our budget through January of 2021. So anyway, I don't mean to diminish my thanks with regard to tremendous foundation building. And we have ways to go yet on our journey, and that's part of the experience. I'd first like to turn the table over to my colleagues to see what questions and comments they have.
Well, Latricia, as I have said to you on many occasions, this has been a very educational process. You've done a great job. It's hard to believe you've been in that position two and a half years now, all the work that you have done in that two and a half years, and then a snapshot as to what you still have to get done with your team. And so I'd like to say congratulations to you and your team. They work hard. They educate us and inform us, and I think this is a very important part of our daily operations here at Washington County. So thank you for your commitment to this and you and your team's hard work. Done a great job.
Chair Harrington, I can, just wanted to express my gratitude to you all, echo everything Commissioner Willey said. Good job. And one thing I wanted to share with you all, I think Brenda is going to probably email Latricia. This last Saturday, I had my monthly coffee, and one of the constituents that came shared her experience and her appreciation about the CPO revisioning process you're doing. And her comment was, "I love, love, love the revisioning process for the CPO." So kudos, congratulations. I am not privileged to the details of what's happening with the revisioning you're doing, Amanda, but good job and keep up the good work. People are really appreciating. And it was nice to hear, and I said we should probably connect those constituents to you to, you know, because I'm not sure. But people are liking what you're doing, even though I don't know what you're doing, but they're appreciating.
More to come.
But I think that topic is coming to us.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was just being too honest. But you're doing great work, the residents, and they're appreciating, so.
No, I don't think a lot. It's interesting, the volume of work and the amount of effort that has to go into it. And I think Jerry said it well. I know in reports that I've done, every quarter is a little often to be going through this and showing that, especially when you have so much volume. I can only speak for myself and certainly not the team before us, but I wouldn't want to keep coming back every three months and saying, "Well, we're right in the middle of this." I think a six-month glimpse is a little bit more accurate in terms of what they've accomplished. I think six-month glimpse is a little bit more accurate in terms of what they've accomplished. But I, I'm a little impressed, really, with the amount of work you guys are all doing. It's amazing. So I might think about that every quarter. I know we asked for that, but I don't think we knew what we were asking for. And, and now we're getting this, and it's, it's not enough time to let you accomplish something. Just a thought.
Well, related to that, beats what I was going to say. I was going to say, dang, I'm the only one that's got some real deep questions and asks here. So thank you for that, Commissioner Rogers. As I mentioned, a lot of foundation building, and one of the reasons why I think it was imperative that our equity resolution committed to a strategic action plan is so that we made a commitment to take action, so that there were not just words on the page. And I am grateful for the leadership that we have, Ms. Angie, Mr. Carr, Ms. Tillman, the ACAs, and down through the organization, because you have helped us learn how to center equity. And you have actually done more in working with departments and supporting departments than the charts and graph show. For example, we had a, a work session topic with LUT, Land Use and Transportation, today on a transit study, and it reminded me that last summer, within that department, they had worked on wider community engagement, including having focus groups with our historically underserved by government, community groups on three different plans, middle housing, the transit study, and MSTIP. They were doing things differently with regard to broader community outreach and trying to be more present where people are. They still did the online stuff, too, for general outreach, but also those focus groups. It goes to what you spoke about earlier with that intentional relationship building. It's a good start, or there was some of it going on previously by departments and in our silos, and we're trying to take this one Washington County approach. So it's really not a start, it's just a new inflection point and continuing from there. But I still have a little difficulty, not with the what, but the, oh, my gosh, how are we going to do all of this as one agency? So this is where I need a little help. We adopted in August of 2021 our Gen One, our Generation One Strategic Equity Strategic Action Plan. And you've done a terrific job here of giving us a snapshot in time of where the great progress that you've made in that. I went back to that adoption and looked at the charts, and everything that was there is here and more. So you've talked about how there are some policies and procedures we need to establish. You mentioned many different dates that are coming up, some in May, some quote-unquote "far out" in October. Not very far, I know, I'll be there before, I know it. So I know there is more coming. And then I look at the Strategic Action Plan next steps, one and two, and I'm like, wait a minute, here's a summary of what, but you left us behind. I want us to adopt a Gen Two, a Generation One Version Two. And the reason I call it Generation One, and then Version One, and then Version Two versus, say, a Gen Two. Gen Two, to me, is when we go about that community strategic plan, right? With that full coordination. But, boy, we're not resting on our lawyer, lower roles in any way, shape, or form. We are striving now. And so there are things that you talked about in those previous slides that somehow I'm not connecting or seeing in these next steps, one of two and two of two. And that's why I'm like, ooh, because we on the board need to be there, too. And so I need you to come back with that strategic plan version two, Gen One version two. A little bit more detail about how it lays out in time, the, the larger ball of wax, because this seems a little too general to me. And I support these things, but I'm really questioning, ooh, are we really going to be able to do all this between now and June of 2024? And part of that is because we are on this journey, too. And we only have so much time and so much political capital, which brings up another point. This co-creation model is still very new. Some of it concerns me quite a bit still. But what's really missing for me in what I thought I heard and in what I'm seeing is the board's not there. Co-creation is done to us. That does not work for me. Co-creation means co-creation and doing it together. And so it doesn't feel good to me to see that we don't play a role until next May. Huh, I don't think I got it. There's something I think I'm missing in terms of what your, your approach probably is. But it's the latter part of a Tuesday, and I'm a little tired. So I need a little help, that's all. I, I'm just not as close to it, and so I need it to be illustrated to me a little bit further. And I'm hoping that I'm making sense in, in what I'm looking for. So it, it's an illustration so that I know I am appropriately on the journey, because I don't want to be left behind. I know I have work to do in this area, and I want to do it. But I need a little help, so. And I feel in very good hands with your expertise and with your patience, and you're prodding to get there. Does that seem doable, Ms. Angie? I was, I was talking to them, but it's really got to be through you.
Yeah, I, I saw the eye glances towards me. So staff can work on that, and we'll try to program it within the rolling agenda so that the board has clarity of what the next steps are in the Strategic Action Plan. This is an important step since our current, I just want to remind the board, our current Strategic Action Plan does in essence sunset in 2023. And so we continue to have the sense of urgency, not only from our employees, but our community to continue to move forward with this work. So I think our community would also benefit hearing from, about more detail. What does this entail? I also know the board has requested, most recently in one board item, further just community engagement plan. So not only defining what co-creation means, but further developing and laying out what the community engagement plan is so that the board feels comfortable with the next steps.
Do you, four or five, have any questions of us from what you heard? Okay. Well, just for the sake of our audience, we have been intentional about having these updates here in our board meeting so that our community could see this journey that we're on and how we're striving to do things better. We could have done this in our work sessions, but we wanted to ensure that we were as open and transparent as possible, which means I'm just as verbal here tonight as I, as my colleagues are used to my being in the work session room, asking questions and being very upfront about things I don't think I understand, and I try to own that and do better. So, thank you.
Chair, can I just add one more? I, I do appreciate the acknowledgement of the equity resolution and quarterly updates to the board. I recall when Ms. Tillman and I first started, sure, well, quarterly updates, but that quarter passes very quickly in time. And it seems as soon as one is delivered, the team is already thinking about the next one. So as the board can see tonight, it's really focused on the Strategic Action Plan. And so you will start to see in future updates, really having more of a focused look on maybe one project, one program, so that we use the board's time and also get input on the work that OEICE is doing moving forward, because there is a lot. And we want to also make use of your time and the valuable resource in getting your input and insight to support our work moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to the Boards and Commissions section of this evening's agenda. The first item is to appoint members to the Behavioral Health Council. We have a proposal before us to appoint Francesca Sinapi, Jennifer Yonker, Tammy Scherer, and Laura Vences as new members, and to reappoint Kim Cooper, Marcia Hill, or Hilly, Eric Schmidt, Karen James, Stephen Youngs, and Carol Greenhour as returning members to the Washington County Behavioral Health Advisory Council for a term ending March 31st of 2026. What are the wishes of the Commission?
I'll move.
Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we have a proposal to appoint Kristi Dykink and Sandra Smith to the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee for a term ending March 31st, 2027, and appoint Brian St. John for a term ending March 31st, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And I don't know about you folks, but I'm not quite ready to greet the years of 2027 and 2028 yet, but I certainly appreciate members of our community volunteering their time and expertise moving through those years. Lastly, and this is the new item that was in our packet, we have a proposal to appoint Steve Pitzel to the Washington County and Service District Lighting Number One Budget Committee to fill a term expiring June 30th of 2023. And?
Second.
Quick question.
You're questioning the date, aren't you?
Yes. Did I just write that down wrong? Is it 2023, or it is 2023?
Yeah, we're filling a position, and then that will probably be renewed, yeah.
Can't we just appoint him through June of 2024?
I'd ask that Mr. Munn, come to the mic, please.
I, I get the position and whatnot, but...
We're just going to do this again in a couple months.
Yeah, for, thank you, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners, Greg Munn, for the record, Chief Financial Officer. The reason for that is it keeps those expiring terms staggered. So it keeps them consistency there.
But just as we appoint you, we hope you'll reapply for this following iteration. Okay. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Pitzel, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we will move on to public hearings. And here we have a resolution and order to adopt the fiscal year 2022-23, our current fiscal year, Washington County Supplemental Budget 2022-2023. Really? It says the same, it doesn't matter. Catherine, keep moving on. Washington County Supplemental Budget. Mr. Munn?
Yes, thank you, Greg Munn, for the record again. Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners, good evening. So the item before you today is a, is a, one of our periodic budget adjustment requests. We do this three times a year. So we'll have our regular budget adoption, which will be coming up here in, in June, and then we have three supplemental or budget adjustment options over the course of the year. That's just part of the normal process. The items that are on this list here, we, we ask for those from our departments. Those are all vetted through the Budget Office with the goal of, of only placing those on here that we really feel need to be, need to come before you to adjust the budget. We want to keep the budget as close to the original adopted budget as we can, but we also realize that over the course of time, things change. Could be one day after adoption, it could be eight or 10 months after adoption. So that's just a little bit of background. So we have seven items here today. None of the items are requesting a budget increase, they're all requesting a budget transfer within existing appropriations. So the, the first one is a housekeeping item. It's, it's an item for $30,500 that requests to move money out of contingency in the general fund to fund the Salary Commission for Elected Officials recommendation for adjustments for the annual cost of living adjustment for the Board of Commissioners. It was erroneously omitted from the original 2022-23, our current fiscal year, budget process, so this item would add that back in. The second item is also somewhat of a housekeeping item. It's moving the budget for people, for three FTE, and also related materials and services from County Council's budget back to the Auditor's budget. Number three is the Survey Development Review. This is a $250,000 item, also moving dollars from contingency, so it's not an increase. But it's a workload balancing item that reflects the increase in surveying performed by a couple of other funds that drives the workload for the Survey Development Review Fund. They keep a real lean staff there, and, and they have to be able to flex as their workload changes throughout the year. Number four is for Service District, is Service District for Lighting Number One, $200,000. This request to increase the appropriations for higher-than-anticipated utility expenses, really driven by two, two reasons, is Portland General Electric, electrics rate increase was greater than was anticipated, and the service area that's covered by SDL Number One has expanded beyond what was expected. So not an increase, but a move from contingency to an expense item. Okay, number five, a $30,000 item for general fund parks. This is a additional cost needed to cover costs for a water line leak that occurred over multiple months, and also to pay for the higher-than-anticipated water utility expenditures as a result.
Which park?
It is not specific to a park, it's a water line leak. I don't know which park.
They're in very different places, so.
Mm-hmm.
I, if you could just follow up and let me know, that'd be great.
Yep.
You don't know that, do you?
Number six is $81,687 general fund transfer. This item is a technical budget adjustment. The special assessment revenues are restricted to fund only the park operations and maintenance at Metzger Park. The general fund transfer is required to offset the countywide cost allocation plan expenditures allocated to Metzger Park that was erroneously omitted in the budget process. This item requests to reinstate that amount to fund those costs. And number seven, law enforcement services, $61,593. This is simply... And number seven, law enforcement services, $61,593. This is simply to move contingency budget into an expenditure line item so that the sheriff's office can outfit a couple of vehicles that they had intended to do last year, but because of the fiscal year cutoff, weren't able to do it this year because they didn't receive the car until this year, the cars until this year. Those are the seven items. Any questions?
I have one. In regard to the Metzger Park, item six, the way that that's phrased is a little interesting. It seems to be that there is a deficit due to a cost allocation, internal one. So, are we simply taking money from the general fund to that particular org unit and then reimbursing ourselves for an allocation? Or is there a deficit in the amount of upkeep versus the assessments that being done?
Commissioner Rogers, I can answer, I can answer this. And I would also ask that Mr. Munn and Mr. Carr add to this if, if need be. So, within the local improvement district, the enabling RNO has always indicated operations and maintenance. So, historically, the county has used general fund to pay for the cost allocation, or the internal services, because there is internal services that parks Metzger benefits from, such as HR, legal, et cetera. So, that's been the historic practice within the county. I have received a question of can that practice change so that Metzger Park can be fully funded? Yes, it can. That would require us to, to run a new assessment role and also update the RNO. It is suggested that there would be significant also outreach and working with those affected property owners to, to inform them. There is one property owner that does pay the majority of the fees within the local improvement district.
I think you've answered it. The issue, the issue is, in my mind, I always thought it was fully recoverable, but I guess I missed that part, that maybe there is some, lack of a, and this is my word, it's a poor word, but subsidization, because this is a, it's the only LID like this that we have in the county, to my knowledge, for a park facility. I mean, the only other thing we have is Lake Lake. And so, what you're saying is that the normal operational costs that anyone has for operating anything, we're not charging that. But if we did charge it, it's at $81,000. The rest of the fees are being covered, I assume, by the assessments. So, to make this whole, is it only the $81,000, or is there a larger deficit than the $81,000?
Staff are currently looking at that. To the best of our knowledge, it is $81,000. I will share this is one of the outcomes of us looking and combing through all of our budget and also separating out our internal service functions from our general fund. We're able to segregate costs much better and identify kind of historical structures such as this.
Other questions or comments? So, I neglected to ask a question earlier on the Survey Development Review with, you, you talked about this survey work, and it seems to me to be one example of perhaps many or more than one where the incoming work flexes, right? It's work that's related to the demand of, of development and so forth. Is this, is this use of contingency from one budget year to the next? I haven't been taking the point in time from supplemental budget from the last fi, four, five years onward. So, I would just be interested in, before adopting the next fiscal year, just having a general sense for how we really rely upon having contingency for certain types of unknowns or activities. It's not bad, right? I'm in no way inferring that. I would just like us, as we, I strive to learn more with each budget year, and as we try to have more community members involved through our budget committees, but also building general community knowledge, how it's, it is a best practice for us to have these, the contingency, because, you know, there's sometimes contracts over the course of the year have to be increased because of costs or unexpected findings, all good stuff. But I'm just wondering if this is, the nature of the work occasionally requires more comes along. We can only provide a best guess for a fiscal year. That's all.
Yeah, that, and that's my understanding as well. I spoke with Stephen Roberts before the meeting tonight, and...
And he's lurking behind you.
Is he?
To ensure that you're not alone in this. And, and I'm not asking, needing an answer tonight, rather. I'm just trying to learn more budget-wise.
Yeah, and I, and I'll defer, obviously, to the budget expert here. But, so, yeah, we do, we do anticipate that in the course of a year, we anticipate a certain level of expenditures in that Development Review Fund. In this case, we've pulled staff from other, that are housed in other funds to do some development-related work. So, we need to create some additional appropriations to reimburse those staff members for their time. And so, yeah, so it's a, in, in some funds, in our capital funds, for instance, we oftentimes just allocate the full amount that's in there so that we don't keep a contingency, so to speak.
Yeah.
To maximize flexibility. In some cases, we do have some educated guesses about how much we're gonna need. And then, in some cases, we do need that flexibility to draw the contingency.
Yep. And I think we do need a degree of operational flexibility for what, what we need to do. All right. My comments on Metzger Park. When I read this information, I, what I got out of it is that, that LIDs cannot be charged for the countywide services that they rely upon. And that rubs me totally wrong, because this is a local area park, and it needs to be paying its way through its, its LID. So, I went back to the adopted budget, and I want to also thank Ms. Angie for working with the rest of you, her staff, because I searched our portal for packets, and I had in my mind that we had presentations further back in time, but they, I was not able to pull them out of the portal. And but, but thanks to all of you, she was able to provide that to me, and I was able to look at that between our work session meeting and tonight. And I also had the time to go to our current adopted budget. So, from what I can tell, we currently provide, in this fiscal year, provided a general fund subsidy of $167,603 for the Metzger Park operations. And for whatever reason, we have to add an additional almost $82,000 to the mix for a total of $249,000 and change, almost a quarter of a million dollars for the pleasure of Metzger Park. And I'm going to support this, holding my nose, because this is essentially backcasting. But I have a really hard time moving forward to provide such an appreciable general fund subsidy of countywide resources for a local area park. So, I think we need to take a look at what our options are. But that is one that I'm going to have a really hard time including in adopting our next fiscal year budget. So, and I'm, I'm, I was really angry with myself for not better understanding the degree of general fund subsidy. We have it for the whole parks category, but it frankly isn't as transparent as I would like it to be for how the general fund is used to subsidize our minimal parks. And that's one reason why I wanted to know, where was this water leak, right? And it just frosts me. You can't operate a park without having the people to do the work, and that includes the contracts also for the park maintenance and improvement and the fleet. And that's why we have a countywide cost allocation model. So, it just frosts me a little bit. So, I'll learn more, but although, yes.
Well, if I can, if I can give you any comfort, is that this is part of the work we're going through with the Budget Office in reviewing our general fund and what's in it and what's not, and what shouldn't be in it, and, you know, really beginning to shine a light on those items. So, we'll, we've done some of it this fiscal year, and we'll continue to work on that as we move into next fiscal year. But that will be definitely one of the items that we look at, all the subsidies.
Yep. Specifically to Metzger Park, I've already directed staff to develop policy options that we can bring back to your board.
Yeah. It's just going into this proposed budget with the challenges that we face, I appreciate all the work. I don't even have the proposed budget yet, right? Okay. But I know that Ms. Angie, Mr. Carr, and all of the staff, top to bottom, bottom to top, have done a lot of hard work to figure out how we can continue to deliver these valuable county services in service to community. And our employees are one, are, are most valuable resource, and they are, each and every one of them, I value. And so, I don't want to be making any hard choices between personnel cuts and things like this. So, little bit of my philosophy. So, anyway, I'm taking too much time. So, ladies and gentlemen, I need to open a public hearing on this. Did you have anything more in the staff report? Okay. With that, I'd like to open a public hearing. Mr. Moss, do we have anyone who would like to speak us, speak to us about our supplemental budget?
So, we had no one sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Would anyone like to come forward and provide public comment on this public hearing for up to two minutes? Just raise your hand and start to move forward. Not seeing one in the room. Anyone watching this meeting via Zoom, would provide public comment on this public hearing. Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function, provide comments for up to two minutes. Not seeing any hands. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. And with that, we'll close the public hearing. So, Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the resolution and order to adopt the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2022-2023?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Thank you. Next, we have our second public comment period of the meeting. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak to us for up to five minutes?
We do, Madam Chair. We have Pedro Sanchez. Pedro, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you for joining us tonight.
And thank you for allowing me to speak. I see Washington County is in great hands, there, Chairman Harrington. I am one of your regional long-term rental assistant-type people who got housed because of the taxpayer initiatives in those three counties. And it was no easy task to get that voucher. From day one, I've been just marginalized and discriminated against by Open Door. It was even, like I said, it was hard to get that voucher because they weren't interviewing any Hispanics at all, okay? I had to go there. And finally, when I went there, I was met at the door and trying to be blocked from going there. So, but I went in the office, and I said, what's going on? How come you guys ain't interviewing us? But I got interviewed. I was supposed to meet her at 1:00 there at the office. She didn't show. So, I went back. And then she showed up there, back at the thing. Well, I ended up getting the voucher because of my past, I, I went to prison for six years on a crime I didn't commit. Everybody knew I was innocent. The alleged victim told the police officer, who actually assaulted her, hit her in the head with a hammer supposedly, and it was her boyfriend. He didn't give up. He told everybody who would listen, the DA, the judge, they hid all the evidence. But I won in the Supreme Court. So, I have been talking to people. I've talked to Peter Cost of what I've been going through with Open Door. And now I know why I'm here, because there's no plan. The young lady here talked about no plan, no Title VI plan. Well, that's, that's a civil rights law that says that you won't be discriminated against race, color, creed, for anything like, if you're receiving federal funds. But there's another law that, it's the Civil Rights Registration Act that defines programs and activities and federal aid requirements, but it expands it into no federal, that you don't have to have federal aid or, for those reasons, it could be, you know, state aid. If you're being discriminated against, it's what it is. So, that's why I'm here, obviously, because you have no plan. Peter Cost didn't know what to implement. Instead of going at Open Door saying, what are you guys doing here? He switched it around. I became the issue. I called him back. I said, wait a minute. Did you even address the racial discrimination that I'm going through? No more contact from him. A Jason Tate, I tried to call his office, says, write, write a grievance. Didn't even listen to what I had to say. Why? Because there's no plan. No plan at all. My doctors want to give me two more new knees, right? But the way I'm going through with Open Door, I gotta get back to work, because I gotta buy me, you know, just the simplest stuff to, you know, I like to clean my bathtub, right? I like to clean my toilet. But they won't even supply me with anything like that. I don't know how many Hispanics got vouchers that last time, but when I did get mine, they waited two, three weeks to give it to me. And then, when I went to ask them, you know, what's going on here, they didn't even know how to fill out the application, because the application will tell you, if you have criminal history, explain it. They said, no, you don't have to, you don't have to write one. If, if you get denied, we'll appeal it. I got denied. Did they appeal it? No. So, I left them out of the equation, and I went and did it myself, wrote the letter, did everything, and had them submit it through their computer, and I got the apartment. And I thank God, every day I walk in there. I was homeless for 30 years, but I wasn't hopeless. I went to college. I went, I studied criminology and psychology. Right before I went to prison, I jaywalked, and then I had an assault two warrant. And I go, what's, what's this about? And the rest is history. I'm a trained building inspector, so I was not hopeless. I, it, you know, I, I worked all the time, but I just didn't have the, I didn't have the, the, well, I got discouraged real quick when I went to go apply for apartments and got turned down, because I didn't know how to go about it. So, it was just all motels and hotels, and, you know, and working union jobs, going out of town, going this, and picking the out of, out of town jobs so I could, you know, at least get that per diem and get a hotel. But, but that's the crux of it. But what I was, I, I went through, I got my voucher through the Culverleaf Shelter, and that was a really horrific experience because they had a director there that would cuss, scream, you know, and just be vulgar with us. Just, just no, just, just a disdain for the homeless. And that's what I see coming out of these caseworkers at, at Open Door. They have no experience with homeless. They've never been homeless. So, you know, and that's what you need to work with people. You need some type of empirical experience to understand where they're coming from. You don't argue with them. You don't negate them. You know, you don't belittle them. You don't make them You don't make them feel like they don't belong. And that's exactly what they're doing. And if that's your only...
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
You bet.
We've been very indulgent. We were over three or four minutes.
Okay.
We have a lot of people in the audience who can assist. And I would encourage...
That's fine. Okay, I'm done.
Tanya, if you'd assign somebody to talk to him. I think he's got a compelling story.
Yeah, but thank you very much.
We do these because of procedures that we'd have to allow everybody to go.
Right, I understand. Yeah. But I was going to say, you know, your attention to that no plan of, you know, the civil rights plan and the ADA plan, but I didn't hear anything from the other three. And I just want to say, like...
Don't worry. They support our staff moving forward.
Like a cancer silence grows. And that, those issues are really important. You've got to have a plan that way. Peter Koss, Jason Tate will say, you know, you got to address it. And Open Door's got to be called to task.
So thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for sharing your story with us tonight. I do appreciate it. We are working hard to ramp up our capacity and do a better job in our community supportive services, especially with regard to housing, stable housing for our community members, as well as affordable housing. And you're sharing your story with us tonight, and it's on the record, and Clerk Moss also has your contact information so that Ms. Angie's staff can follow up and make sure we have a good appreciation for what you've gone through. We're very pleased to hear, I'm speaking on behalf of my colleagues now, that you have received a housing voucher and that you are in stable housing. As you say, you're not hopeless. You are a contributing member of this community, and we appreciate you for being part of our community and helping us, having the grace to help us learn how to do a better job. Thank you for sharing your time with us.
Thank you. And I almost got a CDL since I've got...
Good. We need more CDL drivers.
Who do I talk to?
Thank you, Ms. Angie. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
No, Madam Chair. We had no one else in the room here. Would any member online wish to provide public comment for up to five minutes on any county-related topic? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any additional hands.
Well, thank you very much, Clerk Moss, and, excuse me, I seem to have misplaced my previously organized papers. So now is the time that I make board announcements. So I would, I'm clicking furiously on my electronic packet. Here we are at the end of April already. This Thursday evening, we have our second part of our budget committee orientation. I hope you'll join us either here in the room or by Zoom at 6:00 PM, because things are changing with our budget structure, our conditions, and we'd love to have you join us. The month of May is going to be hopping busy because in addition to our regular board work sessions, Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting, and our board business meetings, we also have a whole bunch of budget meetings. So here goes. Tuesday, May 2nd, we have our full complement of board meetings, work sessions starting at nine, Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00, and then our board meeting will convene following the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting, and then we'll reconvene in our work session, usually after the lunch break at 1:00 PM. Monday, May 8th, we will have our first budget committee meeting for the budget season, and this is the one where Ms. Angie and her team will be presenting the proposed budget for Washington County and the Service District for Lighting. That meeting starts at 5:30 here in person or on Zoom. The following Tuesday, May 9th, excuse me, the next day, May 9th, we have just a board work session all day, starting at nine. And since we have more work to do, we're reconvening on Thursday, May 11th, for the second budget committee meeting for the Washington County Budget and the Service District for Lighting Budget Committee. That meeting starts at 5:30. The following week, May 15th, we'll continue with some budget meetings, but a horse of a different color. It'll be Monday night, May 15th, the Washington County Urban Road Maintenance District, also known as URMD, and the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District, ESPD, Combined Budget Committee. So if you live in one of our urban, unincorporated areas outside of cities, this pertains to you because you pay additional property taxes for those two service districts. Join us, please, the budget committee meeting, Monday, May 15th, 5:30 PM. Tuesday, May 16th, is Board of Commissioners Day, work sessions starting at nine, board meeting at 10:00, and then work session reconvening likely at 1:00, if not before. Thursday, May 18th, we switch to the North Bethany Service District for Roads. So if you live in North Bethany, you'll want to pay attention to that. Once again, you pay an additional property tax fee to get your new roads in. That meeting starts Thursday, May 18th, at 5:30 PM. Then, the following week, Tuesday, May 23rd, we have the board work session in the afternoon, just like we did today, 2:00 PM, and then a board meeting in the evening. And then, it's Thursday, Thursday's still in May.
The next two is the following week.
The following week. We're in June already?
Yes.
Holy jamoly. Wow. Phew, we have a lot going on. It's going to be a busy month of May. Join us, please. Be on the journey with us. Any other board announcements? Oh, yes, Jerry Linder, here representing Clean Water Services for us. Yes, sir, please go ahead.
I would just like to invite the public to the Clean Water Services Budget Committee on May, for Clean Water Services, and that will be held at auditorium where you are right now, starting at 9:00 AM.
Thank you, Jerry Linder. Unfortunately, our volume was a little low here in the auditorium, so I'm going to repeat all of that. Next Friday, May 5th, I believe it is.
Two weeks.
Oh, in two weeks?
Yeah.
Two Fridays from now, you mean? Yes, not in...
Yeah, not next, yeah.
We will be meeting right here in the Public Services Building, starting at 9:00 AM, for the Clean Water Services Budget Committee meeting. So for all of you who flush your toilet, whether at work or at home...
Hopefully, everyone.
Yeah, you're right. Ooh, dark humor. Anyway, that pertains to you. We do a great job cleaning, restoring that water, and returning it to the Twalatin River. So...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's really cool science, too, so stay tuned. Any other board announcements?
I move we adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously four to zero. We're hereby adjourned, April 25th, 2023. See ya.